Okay, good evening and welcome to the Powell School Board Directors Meeting for Wednesday, November 15th. First thing on the agenda is pledge allegiance. You can see them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so no public comments. All right, we'll move right on along to our action items. Financial Treasuries Report for October was enclosed.
Remove.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Do, are there any discussions about it? Are you hearing none? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Okay. Approval of the support staff contracts. We, yes, that was included in here. I really feel bad for them that it's taken so long to get these up and going, but. Going to have a motion?
No move.
All right, motion remains second. Is there any discussions on any of these? This is just the overview that they gave.
No.
No. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the support staff contracts signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. I'm sure they'll be happy. The consent agenda.
Remove.
Second.
Motion remains second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Questions?
Could I mention something at this point?
Sure.
There was supposed to be a hand carried nomination form for the open intensive need specialist position, but since we don't have anybody here from Central that hand carried it, I guess we'll visit that when and if someone comes or the next meeting.
Okay, we can actually put it on the.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Right.
We'll put it under nine and a half if somebody comes.
Thank you.
So, if they don't come, you want to talk about it a little bit after if they don't come and then.
Sure.
Otherwise.
Yeah.
What's going to happen is it's going to hold it up for a month.
Right.
Is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, at this point, it's nine, nine and a half. All right. Oh darn, there's no policies.
Want to vote on the agenda?
We had to vote on it.
Oh, changing the agenda.
Do you want to vote on it?
Just vote on the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we didn't do that. Yes.
Oh, you interrupted.
Yes, we did. You threw me right off. You know, I spend my day with a 93-year-old. Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Somebody's got to keep track of me. No policies. Facilities update.
I don't think we had anything carried over from last month.
Wasn't he carrying, um, bits on the furnace?
That's going to be ongoing.
Ongoing, okay.
TV, how about the cameras?
Um, my understanding is Vic Maloney from Central, or SVSU, was going to coordinate with all the schools to update the cameras, so I think we're holding off until we get.
We'll get a better deal, see what other school needs it. That makes sense, because he said we needed, what, four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think we're holding off on that right now until we get a better idea of what we all need together.
Yeah, that makes, that makes more sense, because you get a better deal if you buy in bulk. All right, we're going to hold on the superintendent's report. We'll go down to the principal's report.
So, just wanted to report out that today we had our annual holiday lunch. It was very well attended by parents and friends and.
Good.
The kids always enjoy, you know, having folks come to school and sharing a meal with them, so that was today. It was very well attended. Upcoming dates, December 1st, we have the end of our trimester, so half day in the afternoon for teachers to work on grading. And December 6th, we have a half day in the afternoon and our staff will be working on fine tuning the science units and we just did purchase quite a few science materials for those new units. So, they're, that's what we're doing on the 6th in the afternoon. And then, won't be too long, December 14th and 15th, both afternoons, we have parent-teacher conferences and those are always well attended here at Powell School, very well supported. And I like the flexibility of our teachers working with our parents. They can't come during the regular hours. They either come early in the morning, stay late at night, so they do a great job accommodating our families for parent-teacher conferences. Other than that, I think that was it.
Oh, everything's.
Short and sweet there.
Short and sweet. No other problems. That's great. I like short and sweet. Welcome.
Good evening. All right.
Good.
Nina?
Yeah.
Sorry for us late. Um, I do, did you do your consent agenda?
Yes.
I have, I was asked to hand carry a nomination form here and I'm going to handle this.
That's nine and a half.
That's nine and a half. We moved it down.
Under nine and a half.
We moved it down to nine and a half.
Thank you.
We did mention that Central Office may be carrying the, for the intensive needs position.
There you go. I was handed that this afternoon. So, I guess I'm asking for a motion to move the nomination for the intensive special needs specialist.
Okay. I'll give him a minute to just look it over. And I had asked Todd, because this is an intensive special needs specialist, what qualifications they have and it's just the tests that they take, they're considered highly qualified to be able to walk into this position, so.
Along with, she does have her associates and CPI trained as well.
Yeah, they all should.
Yep.
Yeah.
But they have so much time to get that, but she's already certified.
She's certified, okay. All right, when you finish reading, if someone wants to make a motion.
No move.
Second.
A motion remains second. Is there any, any questions, discussions?
She's here now.
She works for us now, yeah. She's been here for 14 years.
Yeah.
So, she's just moving from one end of the building to the other.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. So, we went past you, so we're going to back up now.
Go ahead.
I hope you're feeling better.
Yeah.
Sure, you put them down here by me.
I know, no kidding.
I'll try to.
Okay.
Joe, you're back on me?
Yeah, you're up.
How's that hearing, Jim? I want to share with you, I don't know, you can, a letter from the governor that went out yesterday. It is four pages long, so I don't expect that you will.
Oh, we got that today in the email.
Yeah, you might have gotten it in your email, but I wanted to make sure that you all did receive it. Wasn't sure if the Vermont School Board Association was going to send it out to you all, too. Really addresses budget gap issues, so as you begin your, your budget process, I think this is some good background so that we see where the, what the state's expectations Speaking of budgets, we are, the issue is, in the process of meeting with principals, I know Todd, you've already had your meeting with Renee, all the principals from all the different schools. The SU budget meeting is scheduled for the 29th of this month, so the 25th of November will be, there'll be a brief SU meeting at 5:00 at Central Office to do housekeeping issues like consent agendas, but then there will be no presentations or reports given to that meeting. They will go in then at 5:15, go into the budget meeting and work on the SU budget.
This the 29th?
29th.
Okay.
As you know, the SU budget has to be set first so that then we can begin budget meetings with the individual boards. You need the SU assessment. So, Special Education is also in, meeting with Renee and I to start formulating their budget and looking at the restrictions that we may face. So, you'll be, contact, the board will be getting an email from my administrative assistant, Karen, with some suggested dates for budget meetings in early December for this board.
Right.
So, just put that, that will be coming. I see you have on your agenda Act 46 outcome, but I will discuss a few. What I have here are the, is the Act 46 Section 9 regulations, and it's a five-page document. I don't expect that you will read it all tonight, but it is something that we need to begin reviewing. We need to, this district, all the districts will need to submit by December 26th. That's the deadline for their Section 9 proposal. If you go to the last page, you'll see the five educational and fiscal goals of Act 46. Those are really what we're going to have to address in our Section 9 proposal.
I thought there was only three.
This is from the AOE website. Unless there's been an update more recently than this, this one was revised July 31st of 2017. I imagine your, your December meeting may be too late to wait to start working on what this proposal is going to look like. One of the things that you'll see that might take a little time, we have to show that we have met with other districts to discuss what opportunities we might be able to share, so that's one, one issue that we might, you might want to begin working on, looking for the exact wording for, it might not be in this document, it might be in another one. Well, again, I didn't design, designed to meet and read this tonight, but I wanted you all to have that plan, but I know we all, we also, we have to demonstrate meetings with other districts as part of that proposal to see if there are other ways that we can reach the economies of Act 46 that they want us to do.
Do you have a list of all the things that we, we do right now together?
Well, I know the.
I saw one.
Yeah, the Act 46 Study Committee at one point did a list, you know, or, so, where the consolidations were already, things like policy manuals and things like that, so I, I can, you know.
I think that's important that we know, because that's part of the 80, 85% that we've already satisfied the state with. We just have to figure out what the other three things are.
Yeah. Then the other update that I'm aware of, I learned today that there is a recount vote tomorrow in Woodford at 10:00 of their election results.
Oh, really?
By the clerk.
[laughing].
I don't, what, there was 74 people voting in Woodford, 38, 36 was the vote count, so, and there are hand ballots there, so I don't suspect that they will find a two-vote margin, but I don't know. I know it's been filed with the, that's the process. Somebody files with the town clerk within 10 days of the election and they can ask for a recount, so.
I'm not surprised.
And it's going to take place tomorrow in Woodford.
I'm not surprised.
And, so, we actually said the board should probably, because December 26th is the deadline
that we need to get the letter in, I guess, depending on the outcome of Woodford's voting. So, if that comes back the same as it is, then we need, the board needs to sit down and figure out what.
Yeah, from my understanding is also, you know, up until December 7th, you have the possibility that someone could ask for a revote anytime in that 30-day period, a challenge to the vote, so we will.
That's kind of expensive for the town taxpayers. I don't, I don't really feel that, you know. I feel bad for that. You know, I just.
Well, I'm not advocating for it in any other way.
Oh, I know.
I'm just saying as you.
I know, there's a possibility, sure.
Plan your December, that you should be aware that that could be a possibility.
Could be possible, yeah.
And my understanding is a revote can be called for either by the board that brought the article forward or by a petition of, the community, 5% of the registered voters could petition.
30 voted.
Is that what it is, 30? So, haven't heard that, but I do know that there, wanted to be aware that there's a recount going on tomorrow in Woodford.
And just for your information, you're not going to, I'm not going to sit on this committee for this. I did my job in Act 46, I'm not sitting on this one, because I voted for it.
It's fine.
We're just letting you know.
Okay. It's not a problem. I know a lot of voters that went through, because we stood out there for the 12 hours and a lot of people were very upset. I guess the rushness of it was kind of upsetting to people. They couldn't understand why we had to rush, rush, rush.
So, when you mentioned three, there are three tasks that the Act 46, I mean, the Section 9 Committee has to do, but there's, there's five goals, that's where the confusion might be. The task is you, you need to evaluate the current ability to meet or exceed the goals. You see this on page two. Meet with the boards of one or more other districts, discuss ways to promote improvement throughout the region in connection with the goals. And the third thing is submit the proposal. So, there are three tasks, but in those tasks, we have to talk about how we're meeting the five goals.
Okay, good.
Do these have to go in front of the Board of Education?
So, the, they go to the Secretary of Education and she has to submit this by, I believe, June of 18 to the State Board, and the State Board needs to take action by this time next year, like November of 18, they have to unroll what the state plan will be, and the state plan is what the new configuration of districts may or may not be.
Okay, great. My work has just begun.
Along with budgets, it could be a very busy December.
Yes, it could. Okay, I just want to, is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other than the warrants here. Renee's not making it tonight, so.
Yeah, we can sign it. I just want to let the board know, I have heard, well, I think I spoke to you last time, I was supposed to get a phone call in to the Select Board for tomorrow night's meeting and, and sit down with them and talk to them and bow the ball field, but I didn't get a chance to, but after, probably after the holidays, that's the first on my agenda. And if there's any one of you that would like to come with me, I appreciate it. I can just keep you posted.
That's fine, I can do it with you.
Okay, great. The other thing is, I need to talk to Renee. I've been getting phone calls back and forth from the lady that had the, she was head of the senior center. She, she sent another electric bill over to the town. I called the town and I said, please send it here to the school. The school is going to take the building back, and these are all, I got to get everything in a row before I approach Renee, because we're going to have to have our attorney send it back to us, as like we get quick claim deed to the senior center, it's got to be quick claim deed back to the school. So, and the town has voted to, whatever money they didn't spend is to turn it over to the school, and then we can use that money to, part of that money to pay off any outstanding bills. It's mostly the, well, it's a couple of electric bills that they owe, and they agreed to pay the sewer bill, but I'm, what I was thinking was, we'll pay this outstanding sewer bill, but moving forward, I think the board should ask, not the statement, the committee, it's made up of the same, but it's the, the committee for the wastewater, and to have just stopped, because it's the landowner, but the seniors agreed to pay it, and I don't believe we should agree to pay it. I think we'll pay with the outstanding bill, because they have the money that's going to be turned over to us. Then when we're all said and done, I will turn it all over to Central Office and they can contact the attorney and get it turned back over. I called Linda and told her to expect a bill, because I told the, the town clerk, send it to the school, we'll get it all together. I think I still have one, so that's what I'm working on now, is trying to clean that up before the first of the year. So, we are now back, we, Angie and I went over and took a look at it. It's a nice building. The problem is, you know, it's, the land is owned by someone else.
And there's no water.
There's no water. Well, it's brought in by tanks, big huge tanks, and, and means, because they have the bathroom. Oh, the other thing is, I got to hire someone to winterize it for the winter.
Because there is a new furnace in there.
Yeah, brand-new furnace, $5,000. They just got it granted not too long ago, and they put in a new, brand-new furnace.
Furnace or a boiler?
The furnace.
Not much you have to do to a furnace in winter, right? Just got to shut it down is all you got to do.
I don't know, but they, they have it winterized every year, so I'm going to call probably Ronnie Bisson, he'll go and do it, so.
Good luck in Ronnie.
I think, I have no problem with that, John. So, I think that was all. I just wanted to bring you up to date on the building, see what was happening, and we'll get the bills paid and turn it back over to the school and we'll be golden. I did talk to, Angie and I talked to Joyce Held, she's the.
Historical Society.
Historical Society. She said at her next meeting, she's going to talk to them and see if it's something she'd like, a building she'd like to use. It's a nice, I mean, we walked in and there was.
Beautiful flooring.
Yeah, the flooring is beautiful.
Beautiful.
Two tables, this, oh, actually four tables, this size.
Longer than that, yeah.
All covered up, they, I mean, it's huge for people to use. They've used it for years.
But she, she must have a lot of stuff for, like a historical society, you know, pictures and things like that they could put in.
They could make it into a museum, even.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah, because it is a historic building. So, at this point, we're just, we just left everything the way it was and we'll just keep it locked up and take it from there. But, yeah, it's a nice building and I was really hoping that somebody could use it.
They have a kitchen in there?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yep.
There's a kitchen and.
So, you said there's a sewer bill, but, a sewer, but there's no water in the building?
They have a bathroom.
Well, when they put the town sewer in, you get a bill, whether or not you're on it, you know, you get a bill if you have a, if you have a structure on it, you get 80 bucks a year or something per structure. It's for the sediment, but it's not, you know, they don't get a sewer bill.
But the fire department fills these two huge tanks with water so they can have, flush the toilet and use the sewage.
So, there's no water line or well?
No water line or well. There used to be years ago, but then it was taken out, so. All right, that's where we stand with the senior center. All right, um, we do, you do realize we have one retirement and accept hers with regret. She's been here many, many years.
She leaving when? Right away.
End of the year.
End of the year, yeah, yeah. I think it was Kathy Brooks who came over on the Mayflower, but not Linda, yeah. All right, so, as soon as we hear from Central, we'll figure out days in December that we can set up for our, what day is better for all of you for, for.
And time.
Budgets.
I don't care.
Any, any specific day that.
Wednesdays are the best for me.
Yeah.
Wednesdays are good. Okay, time-wise, what works for everybody? Same as Aaron, 5:30, 5:00?
Anytime after 5:00.
Yeah, I prefer 6:00.
Yeah.
What do I care?
I mean, you could do it your next board meeting, you could do like what the SU is doing, do an abbreviated meeting without presentations or anything, just do your consent agenda, get it out of the way and then have a budget meeting that night, too. But you might need, you might want one before that if we're ready.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
We're hoping to have, December 1st, the tax commissioner should come out with the numbers that we need for equalized spending numbers, yeah.
You do.
Which we anticipate will be reduced from last year because of.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the hole in the Ed Fund, yeah.
You do realize that this process is going to hurt bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We don't think what they're, what the Secretary of Education is predicting for what a increase in the tax rate would be is sustainable, if those budgets won't pass, so, yeah, it is going to be a difficult process.
Yeah. Well, our next board meeting is the 20th of December, and what we'll do is, we'll just wait and if we hear, I'll, we'll.
They're putting that time schedule together, so you prefer Wednesdays. Wednesdays could be tough, because everyone else's board meeting's on Wednesday, but you'll get an email and they'll do a consensus from the email.
Okay, all right. And then we can just figure out what day, what time, when everything, that works for everybody, okay?
Are we going to need a meeting for the Act 46?
Are we going to do what?
Are we going to need a meeting for Act 46?
Um, I think I would rather wait until after, what, tomorrow?
We'll see, see if you get past those hurdles, which I imagine you will, but, you know.
Yeah, if Woodford changes their vote, then it's just us writing a letter. And yes, we will, we'll make an appointment. We could set something up that we can get together and the four of us and write a letter or do something. We have to. At one point, someone from Woodford called and said to me, why don't we join together, Woodford? I said, you know, and anything's possible. Everything's possible. But at this point, I'm very proud of our voters, I really am. I don't care.
I'm glad they showed up.
They did, and I was very impressed.
Me, too. I think it's 75, 80 people.
I walked away that night thinking, "Powell Matters." Powell Matters. And that was a good feeling. Okay, um, did you want to set something up today for a meeting for Act 46, or?
Well, I don't know.
It sounds like it's going to go through either way, right? We're, I mean, even if Woodford does pass it, we still didn't, so we still have to.
Have to write this letter.
Write the letter.
And we got to do that by December 29th, right?
The 26th?
26th, I believe.
26th. So, what we could do is, let me think, we could, if you want to meet the week before, the 13th, it's a Wednesday, same time, we'll just meet before, because the 20th, it'll be kind of hard, because it'll be not only our board meeting, but we may be starting our budget. And if we have to do, if we start our budget early, we may even be able to squeeze it in that night, you know, because we can do budget and then maybe just go right to the, to the letter. In the meantime, we're going to start thinking about.
You better do some thought and research before you just go write a letter.
I, that's what I just.
It's going to take longer than one night to do the, the research and the thought, trust me.
That's what I just.
We got to meet people, too. We got to schedule in to meet people.
That's right. Don't cut yourself too thin, because it's going to be a long process just to do that one letter.
Meeting the boards of one or the other districts? Yes, we'll have to meet with, like, Woodford or, or Bennington or something.
Again, I think I'd rather wait and see what tomorrow's vote brings before we try to meet with Woodford. But yes, we, we can set something up. Wednesday's a good day for us.
Yeah.
Wednesday, we can just work towards Wednesday, then. Okay, we'll keep that in mind. We'll save Wednesdays. Under FYI, the budget status report is enclosed, the SVSU student enrollment for November is enclosed, and at this point, all right, we took care of nine and a half. Okay, all right. Number 10 is motion to adjourn to executive session.
Remove.
For superintendent evaluation.
Second.
And 1D S A, Section 313. Motion remains second. Okay? I want to say. All right.